Good evening, everybody. Thank you for attending our board meeting this evening. I'd like to just go ahead and take this time, just a little housekeeping, just to kind to address what our agenda is in starting off our meeting. We'll begin with awards and recognition, so I just wanted to let folks who have arrived to speak with the board that we will be doing public comment after we do our awards and recognitions. I do want everybody to know, because the amount of people that have signed up, each person will be given two and a half minutes to speak. And then also, just to let you know, when you do address the board, you just come up here to the table and talk to us. We will not be answering or going back and forth with you. We will listen to what you have to say, and then we'll call for the next person to come up. So I just wanted there to be a general understanding on that's how we do our public comments. So, all right, well, moving right along, I'd like to go to number three, awards and recognition. Mr. Parker.
All right, so we have with us Ava Castleman, who is a freshman at Scott County High School. And I'm gonna talk about you for a minute, so you can hang out back there for just a little bit. She's also a state champion, and tonight, we are thrilled to recognize this outstanding student athlete and school record holder. Ava won the 107-pound weight class at the girls' state wrestling championship and holds the title of first-ever state wrestling champion at Scott County High Schools.
Yay!
Sharing a 46-7 record with 33 pins, excuse me. As I understand it, Ava is a well-rounded student and multi-sport athlete who also plays soccer and is a previous Finley 5K winner. Join me in celebrating Ava's strength and tenacity in paving the way for younger female athletes during National Women's History Month, excuse me. Congratulations to state champion wrestler, Scott County High School student, and history maker Ava Castleman. All right, that concludes our awards and recognition.
Okay, number four, agenda approval.
I would like to amend the agenda and add... Do you want me to read?
Yes, please.
The ones you want to add, okay. I want to add the approved to award bid to Griggs Enterprises as the general contractor bid for Oxford Elementary.
Well, I think it's after that one we're wanting to add.
We're wanting to... Oh, after that, yes, thank you. We will add approved revised BG1 for the Oxford Elementary School.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number five, public comment. And please forgive me if I don't do a great job with names, so come along with me. Number one, Jackson Brewer. Would you please come on up? Thank you for joining us. Have a seat, and you can sit right. The mic's turned on and ready for you.
My name is Jackson Brewer, and I've been a student in Scott County for my whole life. I can't say I'd be the same person I am today if I had gone to a school anywhere else. Scott County is not just a district where we rest easy and do what has always been done. I have seen experimentation, I've seen innovation, I've seen progress, all in the name of delivering a better education. From career and technical innovation, to middle college, to the entirety of ECS, no matter what your dreams or learning needs, Scott County has been there for me, and is always there for students. In our high schools, we have students learning how to weld, we have cutting-edge farming practices, trial law, even basic medical care. From IT to engineering to the trades, I can promise you that no student will walk at graduation the same person they walked in. And I know that whether it's board, staff, administration, or teachers, everyone who works in Scott County schools care. I personally had our superintendent, Mr. Parker, as a substitute teacher, and I've had teachers bend over backwards to find the programs I need, and I can't remember a time that I have not felt supported at Scott County schools. You don't often hear from students at these meetings, and I want to say that your work is appreciated. We're proud to grow up in Scott County, and I have seen that the impacts have on students of Scott County, and it is truly incredible. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, Amelia Robinson? Good evening.
Good afternoon. My name is Amelie Robinson. I'm a student at Great Crossing High School, as well as a former Georgetown Middle School student. While I feel strongly about the removal of our music program, I would like to focus on the overall effect of this decision. One of the most life-changing gifts you can give to a child is trust. Having trust in a brighter future, trust in ourselves, and trust in our community are crucial to the self-esteem of everyone. However, I was not encouraged to trust. In fourth grade, the older kids told me about GMS. They convinced me that I'd be entering an extremely unprofessional, brutal setting. Once they planted the seed in my mind, there could be no other truth. Joining clubs or sports never seemed to be an option to me because I had not been given the opportunity to find pride in my community. The only place I felt confident, talented, and heard was within the GMS band under the direction of Dr. Cruz. Why the children of Scott County... Why, so sorry. Why the children of Scott County are taught to view Georgetown Middle School in the way that they do cannot be misunderstood. It has always been my understanding that GMS does not receive adequate funding. Without a strong foundation, students cannot be expected to trust their community, and administration certainly cannot be expected to make do. Students of impoverished schools across the country receive unequal education opportunities, and while it is a common issue, it cannot be brushed aside. Scott County, I urge you to fight against the erasure of community, self-esteem, and pride. Do not allow this scenario to come to fruition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing. Christine?
Thank you.
Hole lighter?
Thank you for joining us.
Thanks. Good evening. My name is Christine Hole lighter. I am the art teacher, team leader for the special area teachers at GMS, Scott County Education Association building representative, and most importantly, a parent of a band student at GMS. I'd like to take a moment to talk to you, the members of the Scott County School Board, about a recent situation at Georgetown Middle School. Last night, the GMS Site-Based Council met to discuss the teacher allocation for the upcoming academic year. Due to the projected decreased enrollment of 40 students, GMS was asked to cut six teacher positions from our already very small and dedicated staff. As a result, the Site-Based Council decided to cut the band position. My question to you, why is the fastest-growing district in the state forcing its schools to cut teacher positions, which in turn is forcing Site-Based Councils to cut fine arts and performing arts programs? We are building new and beautiful schools, but several of our elementary schools do not have arts programs. GMS will now only have one teacher to teach both band and choir. Our students at GMS will no longer be able to participate in all-district band and choir, all-state band and choir opportunities, and we'll no longer have a jazz band. Our eighth-grade students this year marched with the Great Crossing High School marching band. That won't happen next year. As an art teacher, two-thirds of my students coming to me have not had access to a dedicated art program in their entire elementary career. In the last several years, Scott County has lost music at stamping ground, music is only .7 at Eastern, and several art programs at the elementary level have disappeared. So how are we allowing this to happen to our students? We're the fastest-growing district in the state, but we are cutting the arts? I'm fully aware that it is the school's Site-Based Council that makes the decisions on whether teachers they are allocated by the district will teach the arts or work as classroom teachers. I've been a teacher for 25 years. I know how this process works. I'm here to ask you, as the board, directly, why are the schools in our district with the most high-risk students? Students who receive the greatest benefit from a dedicated arts program are receiving less allocated teachers. Our class sizes will be larger, our students will not have access to the fine arts programs, or the access they have will be diminished. The district is not hurting for money, but our students are hurting from the lack of access to the arts. If the district can find money for a behavior coach and a leadership teacher at GMS, why can't the district find money to ensure that every school in this district has a dedicated art and music teacher, especially now, in March, this is National Music in Our Schools Month? And yesterday, we cut the band teacher. GMS is a small school, but that does not mean our students deserve less than any other middle school students in the district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jasmine? Good evening.
My name is Jasmine Wood. I am a current eighth grader at GMS. I have gone to GMS for three years, all of my middle school years, and the only safe place I have found there is the bander, is Dr. Cruz, all of the vice principals, the counselors. They don't even know my name, and you're cutting people's safe spots, safe places. This is... I don't know. Whenever you're just... You're cutting people's safe places and making it so people do not have the support that they need and the... Like what they need to thrive. The only times I've been... I've attempted to talk to counselors and other people, and they have just brushed off everything I've had to say. Dr. Cruz can tell when I'm upset, just the way I'm playing my instrument. He knows, and he talks through things with me and makes sure that everything is okay, which is more than any of the vice principals or anyone at the building has ever done for me, or from what it sounds like a lot of people. And it's not even his job to do that. He cares. He cares truly so much more than anyone else there, and he's getting cut. I don't see how that is fair for anyone. That's all I have to say. I'm very sorry.
Thank you. Shannon? Hello.
Hi, my name is Shannon McConnell, and I am a mother of two students at GMS. I was also a long-term sub at GMS several years ago. I'm here this evening because I don't know if the decision from last night is definitive or not. I don't know if there's still an opportunity to have a say or a hope that can go further than what we received last night, but I thought I'd come and share a story. I am new to the area. My family and I moved here in 2021, and I have three sons, two of whom are at GMS, like I mentioned, one who's at Garth with no art program, side note. But that said, we had met a family when my boys were playing, and the family has two children, two boys, same ages as my two oldest sons. So I have an eighth grader and a sixth grader. The family has an eighth grader and a sixth grader as well. Our families connected. It was the summer of the year prior to middle school, so the summer between their fifth and sixth grade year. And I had this habit of asking every parent I met whose child was about to enter middle school, "Which middle school is your child attending?" And over and over, it was Royal Spring, it was Scott County, it was never GMS. People chose to go away from GMS, and this is the morale that our city carries for GMS, or the lack of morale. So sure enough, I find this family with two boys the same ages as my boys, and they are going to GMS, and they're darn proud of it. And I said, "Heck, yes, you are now my best friend." I love GMS. It is hard. I worked there, and I would cry to Mr. Pickerel because it is hard, but it is amazing. I long to be back there because it is so amazing. So my son is named Thomas. He is in eighth grade. In sixth grade, he couldn't... He was so excited to do art. That was, again, we didn't have the art program at Garth. He was so excited, but there wasn't time for the sixth graders. There wasn't availability for the sixth graders to have art. So for him to have art in seventh and eighth grade is huge for him. That is where he finds his people. My friend, her son's name is Will. Will has been in the choir the last three years. Thomas and Will are both incredibly shy kiddos. That said, Will was able to find his tribe and choir. My son was able to find his in art. So many other students are here tonight talking about how they found their tribe. These are important. These teachers are important. These courses are important. The morale of GMS is important. It is a darn good school. There are wonderful educators there. There are incredible children there. And taking away anything from them, there was a mom last night who called it "The Little School That Could," and she is right. We can. GMS is small but mighty. Buffs on top. Thank you.
Thank you. Melissa? Hello. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. My name is Melissa Askew. I also have two children at GMS as an eighth grader and a sixth grader. I have a third grader at Lemons Mill as well, and my children are not in band but are in choir. And I come to you because I fear, as a person who has two degrees in music, that this cut of the band teacher will also affect the choir teacher because a person cannot efficiently teach both positions. I have been to both Site-Based meetings at GMS the past two weeks. I have reached out in effort to multiple people to see what else can be done by emailing superintendent, the board members, the director of pupil personnel, and the principal of GMS. I sat in a meeting last night with information presented of Title I schools in Fayette County that had incorrect information, and when that was brought to the attention of the necessary person, it was said it wasn't important that the information was wrong. The same information did not compare those schools' band, choir, and orchestra programs, which seemed to be conveniently eliminated in a situation where that information would have been very useful. I will admit that I do not know the exact cuts the other middle schools are facing, but somehow they are keeping their teachers, each teaching one subject, and keeping their choir and band programs, while GMS is looking at the likelihood of a dune music program and having six teachers needing to teach dual-content core classes. I could stand here or sit here and defend the arts in our schools all night, but that isn't the only problem facing GMS. I received a message back from Mr. Parker that was condescending and contained several things that I feel are calls for concern. He said, and I quote, "At the middle school level, schools receive one position for every 24.75 students," end quote. The information presented at the Site-Based meeting at GMS is projecting 40 students less in the upcoming school year. Then we're originally being told to have to cut six positions, but because of Title I funding, they were able to get it to four. But even still, the numbers don't make sense, and for clarification on such drastic change would be appreciated. Mr. Parker also mentioned several things in the works, the leadership community opportunities that would be only offered at GMS, as well as the driving possibilities and the addition of the behavioral coach position. I'm aware of the Driving Possibilities Initiative because I participated in a focus group when it was first being discussed. I am aware and proud of the good things that are happening inside the halls of GMS this school year and the positive effects they are having, but I was told, and I quote, "The more I am forced to publicly speak on these things we are providing for GMS, the more pressure mounts from the schools that are not receiving these additional supports for their piece of pie. I would hope that there is complete transparency within our school district for what is being offered at every school." So this is very concerning to me. The Scott County school system claims the mission of a profile of a learner. To fulfill this mission, this district's moral obligation is to fulfill teacher roles with highly qualified for every subject they are required to teach. Putting a choir teacher in front of a band class is the antithesis of this mission. Band and choir literally cover all six aspects of a profile of a learner. Be an effective and engaged communicator. Be a respectful and accountable collaborator. Be a resilient and creative problem solver. Be an empathetic and compassionate citizen. Be a curious and adaptable learner, and be a confident and responsible leader. You cannot educate the whole child when you do not have experts in their field teaching students. It is incumbent on the administration to provide the students with an opportunity to achieve the goals and the profile of a learner. The decision...
I'm sorry. It's two and a half. Thank you. Do you want to summarize real quick?
I would. I'd just ask for transparency from the district and to see all schools in our county be treated fairly. Thank you.
Thank you. Kara?
Good evening. My name is Kara Coach. I have a student at GMS. I just wanted to make you all aware of how phenomenal the GMS band program is and how big of an impact this will have on around 130 students. The eighth graders at GMS have been given a great opportunity to join the Great Crossing High School marching band. I think there's around 14 of them, and they also had the opportunity to be in the Great Crossing High School pep band. So my daughter has been in the jazz band, pep band, the marching band. I mean, those are huge opportunities. So they are joining the Great Crossing Band and outranking current high schoolers for next year's band placement. One of the students from GMS made it into the top band. My daughter, she made it into the middle band. This is her second instrument. She made it into the middle band. First chair, she outranked a high schooler. I mean, these are great opportunities for kids, and I said, "This gives them a great advantage at receiving musical scholarships down the road. I mean, this is a great thing for our kids, you know? 120 kids, all the eighth graders, I'm pretty sure they have the opportunity to join the marching band, and then it's a seamless transition." I said, "I understand it's a difficult decision, but I hope there are more options to explore." Thank you all.
Thank you. Mike Davis?
Hello. Well, I'm not gonna take up your two and a half minutes or anything like that. I think what I'll do is I'll just email you all my letters and go about that, and that way. But I would like to say something to the wonderful young people that have come and spoke tonight so elegantly and so passionately about what they love. I was here last month, and I believe it was last month, Mr. Cruz received a point of excellence. He seems like a wonderful human being. I had a chance to go a couple of weeks last year to work with the guys at GMS on their Buffway program, and, you know, the students are awesome, the faculty's awesome. But I'd also like to encourage every single person who came here tonight in defense of Mr. Cruz and the music program to know how important it is, and it sounds like a lot of them have been involved, but the Site-Based decision-making councils are huge. You should always be involved with it so you understand everything that goes on, because they control everything at the school that happens, you know, and I encourage them to be involved. This is a great thing where we can have people come and express, whether it's pleasure or discord, you know, to the board. I appreciate you all listening. Hopefully that they can take this back to their Site-Based and get it worked out. There's a lot of things left to go. It's just March, and I hope that they will, you know. Uh, hopefully that they can take this back to their uh, uh, site base and, and get it worked out. There's a lot of things left to go. It's just March, and I hope that they will, you know? Uh, so several, some of these people spoke to me this morning before school even started, and I, you know, I'm glad to see that they uh, you know, were able to come and express their opinions and, and fight for Mr. Cruz. Obviously, he, he, he must do a heck of a job for, for the amount of people that showed up in his support. And like I said, you know, there's a lot of stuff I could bore you about, our, our legislative session and raises and things of that nature, but I felt it was more appropriate to, to, to allow them to have the evening. And uh, like I said, I'll just email you all what I have. I've, you know, I've put together some numbers and things of that nature that I'll email you all, but I appreciate it. I appreciate these people behind me.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
That, that concludes our public comments for this evening. Thank you, everybody, for coming and sharing your opinions and, and making us aware of um individual comments and, and thoughts that, that you have, and we greatly appreciate it.
Yeah, it's um, as I have communicated to many people, um, the allocation formula that we uh live by here in Scott County Schools, it's been the same allocation formula since before I got here. It, it's, nothing about it has changed in terms of those numbers for middle school students. When student enrollment is projected to decrease, it should serve to reason that there are going to be positions that will not be provided. Since the nineties, since the nineties, we've had school-based decision-making councils. I can recall during COVID when we were told as a board team by our legislators that it was our decision to make some of those tough decisions that came with that timeframe. I also remember the frustration that came when some decisions were made that they didn't like, then resulted in efforts to claw back and take that opportunity away. Just as you all are elected to be on this board, we've got people that are elected to be on the site-based council for schools. And that's why they're there, to make these tough decisions. So schools are faced with them every year, and they have to figure out what they want to do with regard to those positions. So again, this is a Scott County Schools Board meeting, not a Georgetown Middle School Site-Based Meeting. And we will not be... And as a result, this, this is not a decision of the Scott County Board of Education. I mean, it follows law. Um, and it, and again, it's just not right. That's what those, those individuals were elected to do. So. That's all I've got to say.
All right, thank you. Number six, consent agenda items A through J.
I so move.
Second.
All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries? Number seven, approve to award bid to Griggs Enterprises as a general contractor bid for Oxford Elementary. Don't me read the whole rationale.
Yeah, if you don't mind.
Approve to award bid to Griggs Enterprises as a general contractor bid for Oxford Elementary with a bid of twenty-nine million, one hundred and fifty-four thousand, accepting the base bid as well as alternatives number one and number two.
I move to approve the award bid to Griggs Enterprises as the general contractor bid for Oxford Elementary.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries? Seven A, I think I'll call it, approved revised BG one for the Oxford Elementary School.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries? Number eight, construction report?
Tony, yeah, Tony doesn't have a whole lot to, to share today. So we're taking a little bit of a different approach with today's meeting. Ms. Simmons, her presentation will be rather short and um at request of many on the board. We, we'd like to give you all updates on facility, projects and, and whatnot. And as a result, uh, Dwayne will be sharing with us uh some information tied to facilities. So.
Okay, thank you.
And I was just going to mention congratulations on your bids. I know everybody should know this came in lower than expected, and there's some trending downwards in the inflation of construction. So congratulations on your good bids.
And I was excited to see the number of bids that we actually received this year.
Yes, six bids. I haven't had six bids in a while, so yes.
Yeah, very nice.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good afternoon, folks. How are we doing tonight? Going to hit you with a, a long list of things. I have unlimited minutes from my group back in the back. They've, they've given me all their minutes for the night, so the bingo board is good. Just want to touch base on, on some, several uh projects that kind of fall under me and talk about my team and where we're at and uh where we've been, where we're at, where we're going, that type of kind of catch-up moment. So. Uh, going to start with Oxford Elementary, just to kind of get you guys geared up for that, uh, as far as my team and their role. Several things that we'll be uh running point on, uh, when you kind of think about that project, you know, all the furniture that's provided there, playground equipment, uh, all the daily and, and monthly inspections that we'll walk through, uh, the fencing that comes along with that project, and um things from TVs and some of the other little stuff. Uh, but then also, you know, moving two or three schools that probably will be impacted with the redistricting. So another summer of movement uh next summer, uh, so the guys will be uh pushing forward on that. Custodial uh also falls under my uh, you know, my watch. Uh, right now, we have every, every spot full, uh, but we do have uh ten Anderson folks uh that we contract with at this point. Uh, so we've tried, you know, it, this is the first time in a long time I can easily say, yes, we've got everything covered. You know, tomorrow I'll, I'll have an opening because I've said that, but um it's been a while since we went this long without having a hole to fill. So that's been good. So I think the, the raises and some of the things that we've done has made things better, and we are having a lot more applicants. So hopefully eventually, you know, we can start even replacing more of the, the Anderson contracting part. The um, uh, and, and what's proving to be good is some of those Anderson folks, if it wasn't so long, it would be quicker, but want to come on with us after working with us. But there's a year type of non-compete rule in there with us, so. But after a year, you know, those folks, especially the, the ones that we really like, you know, jump right on board with us as soon as they, they get that year up. So that's been good. Jump to Safe Schools a little bit. Um, you know, right now, we're, we're in a situation where mechanically, you know, we're in really good shape as far as access control and, and, and doors and locks and all those things. Uh, you know, when I first started here, you know, we were replacing a lot of doors over the last ten years. We've replaced a lot of cameras and a lot of, you know, we had almost zero access controls except for maybe one building back then. So um, at this point, we have all that mechanically uh equipment-type stuff taken care of to, to a degree. There will always be some onesie twosies that we need to either improve or replace. Or, you know, but, but for the most part, we're in really good shape in those areas. We are going to start Rural Spring uh replacing those cameras in that whole building. It's coaxial uh type of cameras, so. They run a lot of, they have a lot of issues, and, and it's time to take all those out. And we've got a list running where we'll use Safe Schools money over the next four or five years to replace some of the aging cameras at, at each building. Sometimes you're talking sixty to eighty cameras per building uh or more. So uh, we'll try to knock that out each year and, and make sure that we stay up to, up to par there. You know, and that's us buying the cameras and a retired just uh maintenance guy, uh, making, you know, knocking it out with, with a little help here and there. So we're able to do most of that in-house. Uh, the big thing that Safe Schools that we, we'll be kind of transitioning for uh is trying to get a second dare officer and also making sure that we have uh getting to that one-to-one SRO ratio and being able to fill over campus. Even though we're committed to it financially, finding them is, is a little bit harder than, than it, it appears sometimes. So. Uh, getting to the, the fact that we have one-to-one SROs and then trying to have that second dare officer, there is, it's not just something you can just do. You have to go through several weeks of training and uh, and, and be that type of person that's can stand in front of kids and, 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 and you're a, you're a teacher, you know? So a, as a dare officer. So um, the big reason that second person would help us, we're trying to transition from fifth grade year to fourth grade year, but we don't want to miss out on that, that one year. Uh, if we just jump into, start doing fourth grade next year, that will leave the fifth grade without it and never have had dare before. So we want to make sure that we figure out a way, even if we still end up with one, that we still hit both fourth and fifth grade next year so that the following year, we just stay in the fourth grade because they're the least tested versus fifth grade. Fifth grade in the spring, it's like, you know, you're fighting uh teachers to get into their rooms. They don't want to give up any instructional time. So it's been hard on the, the dare officers, uh, especially if we have like bad weather and it pushes their, their time back. Uh, so we felt it was time to, to move that and, and, and make that change because fifth grade might be the one of the biggest years tested uh in, in all K through twelve. One of your handouts, um, I want to point out is um this sheet. It's got three pages to it. Uh, when I first started, uh, I think this was sixteen, I started in fifteen, but I think this, we did this in sixteen. It's got the three pages and there's a lot of yellow highlights. When we started, that whole list, you know, the highlight has been done since two thousand sixteen. When I put this sheet, sheet together back in two thousand sixteen, about every school had a good, you know, five to ten things that we really wanted to try to accomplish. And um, you know, as you could see, over the years, we've been able to knock out a lot of those things. And that's, that's a huge team effort by you guys, by my maintenance team, by the contractors. Uh, everybody's been involved in, in, in getting all those things accomplished. So um, you know, that's, that's, that's good to look back on each year and see where we're at and see how much things we've accomplished. Because a lot of times, you know, it's like anything, you forget, you forget all the things you have done. Sometimes you kind of forget. So it's nice to go back and review that and see and, and when we did those things. So a, a big kudos to you guys for helping, because that, that takes dollars, you know, that takes commitment sometimes. And uh, and I, I think Scott County Schools has proven, shown that they want to have, you know, a nice uh environment for learning there, and, and it takes some of those things and those efforts. Where we're at with some of the projects is the next page. So you kind of take that three pages that we started with, and you kind of come now to this page is what I work with uh each year. You know, so we've been able to really uh narrow down some of the lists in some of the schools. You know, and, and I think most of us know the three or four schools that we want to hit next. The good thing is most of the things that we want to hit are not horribly uh wrong. They're just aged or dated. You know, some flooring, some windows, um, some paint here and there, some paving, uh, things that we can knock out pretty quickly in a lot of, in a, in a, in a lot of ways. So it's just a matter of now we're, we're getting to these where we can uh tackle some of the, the issues in some of these um, uh, older schools, you know, the nineteen eighty-nine or, or, or passed typically is where we're looking at as far as the school's age. Uh, so uh, we'll, we'll and some of these are going, we're going to try to knock out, you know, this summer. Uh, so we'll, we'll see how we have that highlighted next summer. The next page I, I gave you is district-wide needs uh for this year that we're going to try to tackle. Uh, so that's, that's this one with the, some pricing beside it. Uh, so there's several really good projects that we're going to try to tackle. And um, and you'll see us coming out, you know, coming out hot out of the gate to try to get these things accomplished ASAP. You know, things like moving the eastern trailer to, to um, you know, paving Northern. Um, and we're also going to tackle adding a lane at Northern so that we can have more room for the buses to get around some of the traffic issues that we have up there sometimes. And also, I'm going to, I work, I, I don't know how it's going to work, but I think we can then turn that extra lane into extra parking during grandparents' day or whatever else we have.
Keep talking, talking about at the top of the parking lot.
No, I'm talking about going up the hill.
Okay, going up to that.
Yeah, going up, be the, be the, where we at it. Yeah. So uh, yeah, you will have to walk up a hill, but they're having to anyway uh, when they have grandparents' day or whatever, when they have too many uh and, and, and just don't have enough parking up there. Uh, so you can, you can see that list and, you know, if you have any questions about any of those things, but um, you know, there's, there's a good list of things that we want to try to get knocked out. And um, I've already got a lot of folks, you know, lined up to ready to, to tackle those, and we should be in pretty good shape. Equipment-wise, something to think about for maintenance folks. Um, you know, it, when I first got here, you know, we barely had vehicles, and we were trying to buy too many vehicles each year. Uh, we've gotten to a point where we're in really good shape with vehicles, but if, you know, we have to always maintain that. And if you rotate one each year, you know, you don't, you've got one that's fifteen years, you know? So fifteen-year-old vehicles typically have two hundred and something mile, thousand miles on it, and the bottoms are falling out of them. So if you, it's, it's easy to say that, you know, we don't need anything, but odds are every year you're going to, we're going to need to buy floor scrubber. We're going to need to buy a vehicle of some form, whether it's a van or a, or work truck that we push uh snow with. So just keeping that in your, in your um brain that, you know, this yearly thing of, of keeping it up keeps us from having to buy, buy vehicles at one year because they've all went to put at the same time. So um, other things coming uh down the pipe that you might have to always think through too is, is yearly mulch, yearly waxing, yearly, those prices increase each year, unfortunately, uh, and they're, and they're, they're hard labor. You know, it's not easy to wax a building. It's not easy to put playground mulch down. It's not easy uh to wax gym floors. But we try to do all that in-house, you know? We, we don't hire anything. On just about any project, my guys are doing it, whether it's custodians or maintenance, and that's, that's pretty cool.
Do you think every elementary needs new mold or added mold to what's already there?
Uh, typically, you know, we divide it. So each school usually has uh, if they don't have it, sometimes they don't have them spread out, but they kind of always have a primary and a, and a intermediate uh side, you know, so two playgrounds. So we bound, we go uh one year with one, one, and then follow up the next year. And just kind of keep it, you know, you got to keep it raked up a little bit on this uh year two. Uh, but for the most part.
It's regulated too, old certain.
Yeah, 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 supposedly you can eat it, if, if you ever want to try it. It's expensive enough. It should taste good, you know? Drives me crazy every time I see the bill, you know? But it is, it's intense uh to get it, you know, you're talking June and July, it's hot. You gotta, you gotta get in there with shovels and, and get it done. This is, that's, that's, you'll see on there for the temporary hire guys. We try to hire those college kids to come in and take care of it. Speaking of the maintenance guys, you've got uh, you know, those guys are knocking out typically on average, probably twenty work orders a day uh for my team. And, and that adds up real quick. So just uh kudos to them. Typically, when I see a work order, before I even got it, get a chance to ask about it, they've usually got it knocked out, you know? So we, we've got a really good maintenance team. When I go to other conferences and meetings all the time, everybody agrees with me real quickly when, and most of them know our guys and know what they do. Uh, the other vendors that come in and talk and work with us with their products know that we have a great maintenance team and, and guys that can handle and do things with their products. So our maintenance team is, is by far, I think, the best in the state. Some of their efforts, uh, I wanted to kind of throw out there. For example, uh, the stickball uh storage building that we're building right now for Scott County High School. We value engineered, value engineered that out and looked to put it back in by change order with uh DW Wilburn for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. You know, we're going to be able to build that for under twenty, you know, so saving the district under a thousand dollars.
May I ask, what is stickball?
Baseball and softball. So just, we started using that uh when we built Great Crossing because we got tired of meetings always having to say baseball and softball, so it became stickball. So it's kind of, we, we morphed.
It's a whole new sport.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, Terry from DW Wilburn uh coined that for us. Another thing that um point out, BMT uh over the last two years is a um, is a, a service group for uh Mitzi and her food service group, uh, all their types of equipment. Uh, last year, we took that back on our, we kind of put that on our shoulders saying, instead of calling out to a outside agency, call, call us first. Odds are, we might not know what we're doing, but we'll, we'll try to tackle it first, or, and if not, then, then we'll call BMT. Well, you know, we went from numbers of, you know, the, the average, so that's the average, is spending a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars with BMT down to under twenty so far this year. You know, and again, my, my electrician might not know anything about that oven, uh, but he's, he's tackling it. He's calling manufacturer, he's looking up a manual, and he's trying to, trying to work on it. Same thing with plumbers and, and whatnot, HVAC guys. Everybody that might know something about any uh, you know, ways dive in and try to figure it out. So again, kudos to them. Again, on, and the cages, again, another value-engineering project. We went from a fifty thousand dollar cost to down to fifteen thousand, uh, getting that taken care of. I also leaned on DW Wilburn a little bit for a favor there too, so I can't take all the credit. And things like graduation and big events, you'll see my team and the custodial team out there, hot and heavy, whether it's setting up the stages, traffic duty, you know, Battle of the Birds types of games, we're, we're there, hot, hot and heavy, making things happen. So big kudos to them. Roof renovation and and review inspections, I'll have this to you before summer electronically, I'll just share that. I'm going to go ahead and, you know, I did this when I first started and we've had so many new roofs added and some, some things done. So I'm going to have our roofing manufacturer go back and review every and inspect every, every roof that we have and then, and be able to give us a report on where we're at with everything. You know, something better than just my, my, my viewpoint, some, you know, some of these technical things that I don't, I don't know. I mean, I get up there and tell you this is a crappy roof or I can tell you it looks clean, but they'll have some technical terms to give us and and where we're at and warranties is is a big part too. Energy efforts, you know, obviously DT drives his train each day and and he's, he's, he's rejected the, the request of coming up to talk. But recently, you know, he's done a couple of different things, but the, the, a big thing he's pushed is we've had a, a company come and do a, a thermal scan of Northern Elementary and and point out some, maybe some areas where we can tighten up our envelope a little bit and look to see, you know, where are we losing the air that we're putting out and and where can we tighten, you know, maybe some caulking here or adjusting some doors there. And then he's always looking and working with K U on things like, you know, splitting meters when it makes sense or, or, you know, they're going to raise our rates unless we split meters, you know, we have to add the cost of a meter, but over time it, it makes sense, you know, for the next 20 years, it's going to be cheaper. So always looking at that with our energy efforts. And we're always looking at gas prices to to make sure that we're getting our best price on our propane and things. We're continuing to have, you know, operational meetings, Big 15 meetings that I run, K S B M, I'm, I'm, I've, I've went back to being a K S B M A board member again, kind of reluctantly, but we do have new leadership at K S B M A, so that's kind of been fun to, to work with the new leadership and and I see K S B M A growing now that we have new leadership and even bigger than what it has been. I was able to take Brent and and Stephanie to their first K S B M A meeting and I think we blew their mind a little bit by the things we talked about. They had some chemistry type of discussions on refrigerant and the, the world of refrigerant and where that's going to be in the next 20 years. That was one of the first things I learned when I got here was R 22 is going out, what are you going to do, you know, and that's a big deal, you know, as we went from thou, you know, not a big deal to thousands and thousands of extra dollars of refrigerant that we have to buy each year until it goes away. So the last thing I want to touch upon that we started is the co-op program three years ago. We've had three wonderful co-ops go with our electrician, H V C type guys, and we hired one right out of, right out of high school and he's going through his journeyman. And then the other two have have been phenomenal. So I, we, I, I love this program, I hope we keep it up. It's well worth the money. They're the young guys, so they do do a little bit more grunt work than than maybe some of the old teeth, journey guys, but they learn a lot and I think we're setting up our bench pretty good by, by keeping that program going. So I, I, I really want to try to keep that. And talking with the other folks on the, on the operation, you know, the biggest thing that, you know, like Mitzi and food service and Josh at Transportation is always trying to hurdle through is, is personnel, you know, just staying above where we're at right there, making sure that we have enough folks and, you know, knock on wood, their heads are above water now. You know, when, when we have our operational meetings, most folks, you know, you know, every day we feel like we're, we're right there, you know, we're not as good as we want to be, but we're right there, a lot better than we were just, just a few years ago. So and I think that if, if I don't have any questions, I, I think the last thing I, I just need to, I've had a couple of meetings today where I've had to, to kind of say this, but I wanted to say this in front of you guys, I will be retiring July 1. And I just want to say thank you to the leadership, you know, it's been a dream come true really because I, I literally did as a, as a young teacher, circle director of maintenance is something I wanted to do to end my career and to get the opportunity to do it for 10 years and 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 work with Billy and and it's been, you know, a, a dream. I love Scott County Schools. I'm very proud of my team. You know, I've told him that a lot today. I'm very proud of our school board and and what our leadership is always trying to do and, you know, I'll take our, our district up against anybody. So thank you for putting up with me all these years. I told Billy if I kept doing it, he'd probably have to end up firing me. So, so it's probably best to get out before he has to do that, so. But thank you all.
Thank you, Duane. Well, Duane, I actually had some questions, but no, 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 no. No, I'll get you, I'll get you. But I just want to say, after you announced that, I, I of course could not, so. But I just want to say thank you for all that you do and and we know you have a lot of heart and and what you put into your services here and thank you so much. Thank you.
I didn't know if he was going to share that or not.
Well, gosh, yeah, I'm glad I was ready for that, thank you. Okay, I'll catch up on that list with you some other time. Is that all for our construction? Will we hear anything from Tony or we? Okay, all right, I just want to make sure, didn't want to leave you out, Tony. Okay. Number nine, student achievement report.
Good evening.
Hello, everyone. Just wanted, this is not going to be very long, this is just for awareness. We are now deep into testing season and so I have a calendar for you all just for, so that you all have awareness. There is also a key at the bottom in case you have questions, but I don't think there's anything on here that you won't already be very familiar with. In January and February, we have been completing our access testing with all of our E L students. It was a challenge because of snow days, but we did it. Also, we are in the month of March and on Tuesday, the 11th, we gave the A C T to all of our juniors in Scott County. And then now, starting this week, we began our end of program testing and that's for students who complete their C T E pathway. This is for them to become post-secondary ready in career and technical ed. And then, of course, in April, we will jump into K through eight I-ready testing with reading and math, so I'll be really excited to share with you the growth from the fall to the spring, possibly in May or June. And then lastly, we have the busy month of May, and you can see in the red, we have A P exams and those are for our A P students at the high school level. And if they pass it with a certain score, they can earn, earn college credit, so excited for that. And of course, our favorite time of K S A testing, the last 14 days of school, where our third through 10th graders will be testing in reading, math, and possibly science, social studies, and on-demand writing. So do you all have any questions? Awesome, thank you. All right. Have a great evening.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Sorry, that was kind of funny there, Wendy. All right. Number 10.
If they'd have asked questions, you could have said you were retiring. That's, that's what I've learned. Where's Duane?
One, one night is enough. Do not do that, please, goodness gracious. That's not an acceptable answer, don't do that, anybody. Don't do that, please. All right, number 10, approved 2025 graduation dates and times for Phoenix Horizon Community, Scott County High School, and Great Crossing High School. Second.
Can I jump in real quick on this one? One thing that was left blank on this is the location for Phoenix Horizon's graduation. That is because we were still trying to iron that out. They had some options placed before them and they had selected, I'm going to look at ready and to confirm, Scott County Middle School's auditorium as the location for that. And so just wanted that to be, just, just so you had that, had that information.
Okay, thank you.
So move.
And I had a second.
Second.
Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 11, approve to amend the 2024-2025 school calendar.
So move, second.
All in favor?
All right.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 12, review administrative procedure 09.2261.AP2 transportation services policy acknowledgement form.
Move to approve.
Actually, you won't need a motion on it.
Sorry.
It's a review, yes. Number 13, approve to abolish one guidance counselor position at Elkhorn Crossing School.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 14, approve to create one assistant principal position at Elkhorn Crossing School.
Move to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 15, approve to create one district-wide speech language pathologist position.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 16, approve to create 11 temporary summer work positions for maintenance and technology for 2025.
Move to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 17, approve section seven funding for the 2025-2026 school year.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 18, approve the school resource officer agreement between the Scott County Fiscal Court and the Scott County Board of Education.
Move to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 19, approve of after-school program fees for the 2025-2026 school year.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 20, approve independent contractor agreement between Scott County Board of Education and Jennifer Strong of Strong Vision Services.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 21, approve transportation agreement between Scott County Board of Education and Scott County Parks and Rec.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 22, approve memorandum of understanding between JAG Kentucky and Scott County Board of Education for the 2025-2026 school year.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 23, approve memorandum of understanding between Scott County Board of Education, Creekside Elementary, and the Big Brothers, Big Sisters of the Bluegrass.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 24, approve the establishment of the Great Crossing High School Girls Lacrosse Team Booster.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 25, award general maintenance supply bid for fiscal year 2025-2026.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 26, approve renewal of bids for general maintenance bid for fiscal year 2025-2026.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 27, approve award general maintenance contracting rates for fiscal year 2025-2026.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 28, approve award pest management service bid to Terminix for fiscal year 2025-2026.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 29, approve award request for proposals for sanitation service and cleaning supply bid for fiscal year 2025-2026.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 30, approve renewal of diesel and gasoline bid for fiscal year 2025-2026.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 31, award request for proposal for audit proposal to Barnes Denning and Company for fiscal year 2025-2026.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 32, approve renewal of bid for fidelity bond on board treasurer and director of accounting for fiscal year 2025-2026.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 33, approve renew awarded bid for school treasurer bookkeeper bonds for fiscal year 2025-2026.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 34, approve surplus items as submitted.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 35, financial statement after all those approvals. Do you want to sit back down after all of that? Thank you. Number 36, approve current bills.
So move, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Number 37, superintendent's report.
All right, so this month, a lot of legislative-heavy kinds of things, but I'll just start with the top. Again, we've worked on the Georgetown Leadership Academy this past, past few weeks, went to Stampin' Ground Elementary's Leader in Me Community Learning Day, Ann Mason had Read Across America event that I was able to participate in, and Scott County High School's JAG, JAG class, they asked for, you know, for a real-life situation and we provided one to them and so they shared some ideas that they had for, for the Georgetown Leadership Academy as well, and that was pretty cool to see the students getting behind those ideas. Cultural leadership, K E D C, one of the cooperatives that we are a part of in our district, they have a piece from their communication liaison, Carla Kersey, On the Road with Carla, and she featured both of our high schools. I believe that you all received a message from Renee on that one. Rather lengthy, a lot of, a lot of good stuff in there, split up by schools, but then also to have the entire, the entire district kind of all in one, in one compilation as well. Scott County High School Black History Month presentation, was able to attend that, attended the state wrestling competition, and Malika Moreno's All-American Jersey presentation happened here recently as well. Human resources, round two of allocation meetings were completed and recently met with representatives from the city of Stampin' Ground to discuss some items that came to my awareness around S R O agreements. Managerial leadership, a lot around Oxford Elementary, pre-bid meeting and bid day the other day for Oxford Elementary. Marion County recently has built an elementary school with Griggs Construction and they've been very pleased. So we know, Duane and myself know several people there and they've expressed nothing but great things about Griggs, so we're really excited about that. Attended K S B A conference with the board and attended a school leadership luncheon at Georgetown College as they're looking to revamp their principal selection or principal certification, excuse me, program that they're going to offer. Lastly, again, attended, I think, every council or committee meeting of the House and Senate subcommittees in Frankfurt. They are in the veto period, they've got two days to come back here in a couple of weeks, and so we'll see what comes of that. Participated in superintendent luncheon for new superintendents, I'm a mentor for another superintendent, so attended that and participating there. And then last but not least, the State of Education address that was given at the chamber luncheon. I know everybody wasn't able to be there, but thank you to those that, that were, and I will stand by the fact that I might have been a little overtime, but they were a little late in letting me get to the stage too, so I think that that was, was fair. but they were a little late in letting me get to the stage too. So, I think that that was fair. You know, I do, I just, you know, thought a little bit, I want to just say one more thing. You know, I think it's, it can be sometimes unfair when people can cherry pick your comments and skew your message. And again, many of the recent communications that I've gotten around the Georgetown Middle School recently, it's included some version of, you know, our school doesn't receive as much as the other middle schools. And as I explained to one of our speakers, you know, that's just simply not correct. I don't care how anyone wants to try and slice it, how mad they want to get about whatever it is that they would like to see at the school. That's not, that's not correct. You know, it's just, I think it's incredibly unfair to suggest that our board cares less for any school in the district simply because we're applying the same allocation guidelines to one school that we're applying to every other school in the district every single year. You know, again, when any size school's enrollment decreases, the staffing is going to naturally decrease with that. Again, this happens in every school in our district. It's happened in every school that I've ever worked in across three districts. It happens in every school that I know exists. As I previously expressed, you know, in Kentucky, site-based councils have that authority over how those staff positions are utilized and not the school board. I do appreciate people's passion for their schools. I do appreciate what I heard today from students in particular as well as parents that are, without talking too much about it, because I don't want to breathe life into it, are trying to combat a narrative. That's what we're trying to do too. So, I guess I'll end with that.
Well, on that note, board comments is next, number 38. And I'm going to start out by saying GMS is my neighborhood and my kids went to that school, my kids went to Garth. I do want to say, bouncing off of what Mr. Parker had to say, this board cares about every single school. And while that is my neighborhood, we work hard for each and individual, each and every school that we have. And this board, above none, we try very, very hard to really pour in to what our community offers our students. And we're really proud of that. I'm really proud of what Jackson had to say tonight and I loved his message. Thank you so much for stepping up and speaking because we love to hear those things. I'm sorry that happened with GMS. I'm sorry that their attendance is projected to be a little bit lower, but that's something I can't control. But what we can control as a school board, we've added on programs. We lean into it, we talk about it. We talk about Garth, we talk about Southern. While people want to say, and I'm going to use this term because I was at the Leadership Academy and you also attended, it's a great program that we've been discussing for months now. And one of the things the kids said to me that just broke my heart and broke my soul, they don't want to be called the ghetto school. So, please, as parents are talking about this and your kids are listening to you, please lift this school up. Lift up the school, lift up the administration, lift up site-based. They're doing the best that they can with what's given to them. We all do. We're regulated by all kinds of rules and regulations we don't like. I would love to say, let's change everything, but we don't get that opportunity. So, but what I do want to say is that school's trying really, really hard. Mr. Pickrell's trying very hard, the teachers are, the behavioral coach is trying really hard. I'm really proud of the progress we're making at GMS. Please lift up these kids. Please let that be the narrative. I had a parent call me before I came here. She was one of my neighbors. She trusts what I have to say, she trusts what we're doing. And I just said to her, please put this message out there. So, I want to say that to everybody who's listening. Please put that message up. Lift them up and make the best of what we can to get to the next step, okay? Please, that's what I'm asking.
Amen.
Amen.
And I just want to piggyback off what you said because I'm a product of Georgetown Middle School. I went to Georgetown Middle School. Bernie Jenkins was my PE teacher. George Lusby was my principal and I got hurt as a cheerleader and George Lusby carried me in his arms so I could go to the hospital. Georgetown Middle School is an amazing place. I was a cheerleading coach with Ken Bridges at Georgetown Middle School. And during that time when I went and when I was a coach, it was known as the bad school. So, guess what happens? People don't want to go. You have this stereotype of students that are off the chain or things happen, but you know what? It happens everywhere. And so, the reason why people don't go is because of the math, that what we're saying, just like you said. If you want our school to be better and for those parents that left, I'm sorry. But if you want the things that you're asking for, keep people in the school. Fight for your school. What you're fighting for right now, fight for the educational part of the school. Fight for the behavior. Do those things. And I, like I said, I'm a product. Now, I tried the band, I couldn't blow the instrument, so I quit. So, I'm a product of the band for about five days. But I'm a product of the music program, so I understand. But we are the advocates. We have got to say, okay, we don't like what's going on, then we need to step up and stand up and we need to put things in so people will stay in that school. Amen. Amen. Yes, and I will help you. And I wrote down some ideas and I don't want to say them publicly because I want to make sure I talk with my board members, but I have some ideas. Yes, yes. And I believe it. Yes, and we are here for you, but I don't want you to think that this man over here is doing anything different. Please don't put your, okay? He is here for everybody, every school. He's a product of Scott County. And so, he is here to support. So, let's make sure we get the narrative right, that we give everything equally to the schools, but if there are less students, we can't give more money. And we need every parent, not just you guys. I need to see all the parents. That's, we need to see all of you all. But thank you so much for coming out and thank you students for speaking because guess what? That shows that we have leaders at Georgetown Middle School. I just clap for myself.
All right, we got a little, we got a little, we got a little passionate about that there for a minute.
Yeah, that's my school now. I wear green.
Okay, just amen to Diana and Wendy and thank you for your thoughts on that. We're all standing together as a team on that. I'm going to shift gears a little bit. I just want to mention that we had all been, as Mr. Parker mentioned, to the Kentucky School Board Association Conference and I so appreciate that experience. The continuing learning that is offered to us as board members is very valuable, certainly to me. And I just have a little prop I brought with me. This is Lizzie. And she made quite a hit at the conference because our students from Elkhorn Crossing were there exhibiting and they have been doing amazing things with 3D printers in their training. And they had printed out all kinds of cool things on their 3D printers, but I fell in love with little Lizzie. I thought she was a lizard. She's actually a baby dragon, but I fell in love with her and they let me have her. So, I wanted to bring her just to say we are very proud of our Elkhorn Crossing students who exhibited at the conference and to thank the board for allowing me to go and learn more about what I'm doing so I can better contribute to the board.
Thank you, Becky.
Excited to meet Lizzie, just as I was. I spent a couple nights with her and suffers and...
She goes everywhere.
Yeah, she does. She really does. Anyway, Dwayne, I missed talk, but I appreciate everything that you have done. It's made it so much easier for self as a newer board. And Billy was the speaker at our Chamber of Commerce and was wonderful. I'm just so proud of our leaders that it does make it, we do love the children. We do love the children. I have children, my children. And I cannot say enough about my daughter being a cheerleader under Wendy and I special places my heart in the office that there. So, thank you so much. Thank you for your leadership.
Okay, thank you very much. Number 39, we're not done yet. Normally, that's the end of our session, but tonight it is not. Number 39. Moved to closed session pursuant to KRS 61.8101 app to conduct student discipline proceedings.
So move, second.
All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. For those who are leaving.